This is our regular session. And if we could do the pledge of allegiance. Ed, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. And we need to adopt the agenda. Oh, yes. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Thank you, Ed. A second. Brian? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, the agenda for October 9th, 2024 has been adopted. And the call to the public, we have two interested citizens who have come to attend the meeting and with some interest in the library board. And would you mind going to the, introducing yourselves? And tell us a little bit about your interest in libraries. Thank you. And that, just turn on the mic. Yeah, right there at the podium.
To introduce myself?
Is it, yeah.
Good morning. My name is Arlene. Sorry. I was invited for the library to be here. And what else? I'm often visiting the library and that's why I'm so interested to be here. And that's it. Thank you. I wasn't ready to introduce myself.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I will just add that Ms. Bina has always been taking her children and we've seen them grow and participate in the program. So we made a call to the public, our patrons, who more, who else to represent somebody from Nogales. And so I'm glad she's here and she's, we've seen her kids grow up. Like, we've seen them grow. I've been there way too long. I've seen the kids grow from five to 20 now. So if we have somebody who's a avid library goer, she's taking her kids to the, to the library. A great representation for the board and the library system.
Thank you. And... Just push the button.
Yeah. There we go. Perfect. Hi, my name is Jasmine Ayala and I'm here from Circles of Peace. I was also invited by one of the library staff. I used to, I grew up also going to the library and used to love it so, so much. And then when I went to school at Pearson, I often found myself at the library. And then I, when I became a teacher, I was a kindergarten teacher, I had field trips to the library. I love reading, so it's something that I definitely encourage to the people that are around me to visit the library. So that is me. It's a pleasure to meet you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm just gonna add something with, for Jasmine. She used to be with Parks and Rec and she has helped us with partnerships through there and now with Circles of Peace. It's another outreach. It's another way for the library to connect to the community.
And we are interested in members from Nogales. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to welcome Francisco Padilla. Thank you for becoming a board member. And if you would like to say a few words about your interest in the library and what you hope to achieve on the board?
Yeah. Good morning. Good morning, everyone. My name is Francisco Padilla. I was born and raised in this community. I live in Rio Rico. Anita and I graduated from high school together, also with Mr. Vander Voet's younger son, Tim. So I became interested in joining the board because a lot of my work focuses on early literacy. So I work for First Things First, which is a state of Arizona agency, and we focus all of our efforts on children, zero to five, and their families. All of our programs are to ensure that kids are ready for their first day of kindergarten. So a lot of what we do has early literacy integrated into that, right? And in addition to being interested in my work, I'm just interested because I feel that literacy is incredibly important. I mean, for not only children, but for adults. I mean, it's something that follows you, you know, throughout your life. I have three boys, twin boys who were eight and a nine-year-old, and all three of them love to read, love to read. And my wife and I also, you know, love to read as well. So it just seemed like a really, you know, good opportunity for me to hopefully, you know, help the board, help the libraries in any way that I can and support, you know, what the city of Nogales and the county are trying to do as far as the expansion of the libraries and really just promote the importance of literacy, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And let's see. We have, oh, they're not here. Can anyone talk about the Santa Cruz mobile library presentation? I believe, Brian, were you present for that? We don't have Superintendent Valdez-Casas and Deputy Donnelly. And you were there as well, Denise?
I was there. Since Alfredo's not here right now, I will just update the board that the Santa Cruz Mobile, the Santa Cruz mobile library is a go. They just need a new generator to get it going. And we are gonna start doing outreach at all the libraries. We're also gonna be partnering with the fire department in the city and in the county to take the mobile library across the county. And South 32 is on board. It was a great event, the unveiling last Wednesday. Staff was there. We had members of the community. We had superintendent from USD. We had Mr. John Fanning, a lot of community support, and we're excited. It's a good thing. I'm glad it was funded. Thank you, board members. Thank you, Mr. Vander Voet. And we look forward to working with Alfredo. And he will be here at the next meeting. He just wasn't able to make it today.
Oh, okay. Okay. Do you have any questions? Something to add, Brian?
Well, yeah, simply to say that I'm really happy and glad that we was able to come together the operation of the mobile library, because it is a really major factor in literacy in the county. And what I know is, I know some women, my generation in Tubac, who received books by the mobile library 30 and 40 years ago. The library went to Sonoyta and went to Tubac, and they still remember it. It left such an impression upon them. So it is, it's a very important factor in our community. And then to the event itself, I was there. I got there late, but I did get there for about 20 or 30 minutes, and it was impressive. It was, and the community's support really reflects the community's support for the library system in general. And I think we always need to keep that in the back of our minds. There is a tremendous support for this library in the city of Nogales and the county of Santa Cruz.
Any other comments, Ed?
No.
Bye-bye.
Some comments. Well, first of all, welcome, Francisco. It's a pleasure to continue working and building community with you. And also Jasmine and Arlette, thank you for being here. And also, I would like to say that I've been working more closely to Arlette. She's a grassroots, a community member that will invest in the community in different ways. She's been doing classes, capoeira classes, involved with the Central Community of Nogales, with Mariposa. And thank you for investing a lot of your time in our community. And about the mobile library, it's a great opportunity. And I think it's a good, it was gonna be a good way also to connect with the, with the community. And if we can go to the colonias and see how we can work with them and bring, maybe we can have like a hotspot for the internet. So that would be a good, a good, a good, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments, Francisco?
Yeah, I'll make them short. But I was there as well, and I'm very excited for it. I was very excited for the first iteration of it. I have talked to Alfredo and I, and I hope that they can also visit preschools in the county, because I think that, you know, I hope that kids get as excited to see it as they would for the ice cream truck, so, when it pulls up. So I hope that, it's a good way to build that excitement about, you know, reading, so.
Do we have a driver yet? Have they, is there someone, or several people? How, have they decided how to handle that?
There is, the position is gonna, is available. I am not sure who the driver is just yet. Do you know, Brian?
I asked Alfredo that at the event, and he said, yes, they do have a driver. There's an employee that's currently participating in one grant program that's expiring, and so that individual is going to transfer over to the, to the mobile library program.
It's not operational yet anyway, right?
He told me the middle of November, which is probably next week, I would guess.
Excellent.
Denise, they need to buy a generator, but...
Very good. All right. Thank you. Now we will conduct our long overdue election, which our bylaws put at August, but we've had some difficulties in accomplishing that. So we did nominate, and I'll go through the nominations. We have Brian Vander Voet is nominated for chair. And I'm nominated to be reelected as vice president. And Omar, the secretary, correct?
Christian is interested.
Sorry?
Christian is interested.
Oh, is that right? Yeah. Shall we nominate him then? Okay. Very good. So are there any other nominations before we do the election? Any other nominations for chair?
How do we put Christian's nomination?
Are you wanting for chair as well? Oh, okay. I'll ask somebody.
Okay.
All right, there are no nominate, no further nominations from the floor for chair. Okay. Then all in favor of Brian Vander Voet being elected chair of the board, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay?
Aye.
All right. Brian, congratulations.
Thank you.
You are now the chair for the next year. All right. So vice chair, I have an indication that Chris would like to be nominated for vice chair. So I will ask someone to nominate from the floor.
Who would like to be nominated? Excuse me.
This is board member Hernandez. He wasn't able to be here, but he's interested in the vice chair position.
Christian Hernandez, right? Yeah.
I would like to nominate Christian Hernandez to the position of vice chairperson of the board.
Okay. So we have two candidates for vice chair.
Who's our second?
We have Christian Hernandez and me, Juanita Havel. So, all right, how many votes do I have for Juanita Havel? For vice chair? Raise your hand, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oh, okay. And Christian Hernandez? Okay. All right, then Juanita Havel will be your vice chair for the next year. Now secretary, again, I have, Christian Hernandez is interested in the position as secretary. We have Omar Villa, who is, has been nominated at our August meeting. So neither of them is present, but in their absence, we can hold the election. So Omar was nominated. How many would vote for Omar Villa for secretary? Okay, we have.
Aye.
All right. And then Christian Hernandez? How many votes do we have? Oh, we have a tie.
How can we have a tie? We've got five members.
Okay, I'll vote for Christian. So he will be our secretary next month. All right. So with that, the board elections are concluded. And according to Robert's rules, I believe I can hand the meeting over to Brian, our chair. Are you comfortable with that, Brian? Do you have the, we have a couple of additions to this.
Additions to the agenda?
Yeah. After the discussion items, if you will add, board reports, should have done that before. And, and then, of course, we need to do the future agendas and next meeting.
Future agendas?
Uh-huh. Future agenda and next meetings at the end of the...
Future agendas, okay. I got that.
Okay. All right, then I will take over the administration of this meeting and moving on to item four of the discussion items, which is the Rio Rico Library Expansion. And I was chosen to speak to this point. Well, this item's been on the agenda since almost the beginning of the year, every month, and we haven't been able to make much progress. We did meet in, I believe in the month of June, with Denise, myself, Christian was there, and Mary Dahl representing the county. And we, we sat and talked in the Rio Rico Library for maybe about an hour, just talking about concepts and general, general subject matters. And then we walked the building to see what, exactly what it curtails. That building in the Rio Rico, if you're not familiar with it, at one time, in the early 70s, it was built to be a real estate office. And so while there are, whether, there's been a minor amount of remodeling for the library, the most of the building is partitioned into like small offices, like cubby holes. But there is one large empty room right next to the library. And it's, and at one time, it had, there was an access between the existing library and this large building, and then it was covered over, and now we have a bookshelf in front of it. So looking at it, the potential, the physical potential for expansion for the library would not be a great event. I think it's something that's feasible. But that's into the future. What we first have to do is, if everybody in this room is convinced and really wants to push forward with the expansion of the Rio Rico Library, then we need to meet ourselves and get a plan together. What would we do with an expanded library? That's the first thing. What's our vision? And what programs can we offer? What projects can we offer? So that, that's gonna be upon us. And once we have an idea, then we will go to the county and talk to them about the feasibility of expanding. Or maybe we can do the two things at the same time. There's other, this is a very valuable piece of real estate in Rio Rico. There are other organizations that are interested in utilizing this large room. The Boys and Girls Club, which is trying to form in Rio Rico, is looking at it, and so is the Rio Rico Historical Society. And those are two private entities, and I would, although I'm prejudiced, I would have to say that the county should give preference to a county operation, which is the library. But that's, again, my personal opinion and prejudice. So I don't know if they really will or not, but we won't know until we cross that bridge. So I, I'm willing to meet just as soon as possible with any partners that are, that are, individuals that want to, and begin to formulate some, our vision and our plans for the building. And at the same time, we can contact some of the supervisors or other politicians and start, you know, beating the drums softly that we'd like to do this, because it's a process. The expansion of the Sonoyta Library took four years, if you can believe it, but it did. And I'm really prepared that this project may take three or four years, because things move really, really slowly. They have to agree that it's in the concept, and then they have to budget the money, and they have to get an architect. They have, you know, the county moves in this way, you get an architect, then you get plans, you approve the plans, then you get bids, you approve the bids. I mean, and all this just takes a long time. So we gotta move. I really feel that if the library doesn't, personally, I feel if library doesn't expand in Rio Rico in five years, you're gonna wish you had, because the population of Rio Rico is gonna continue to grow. It's gonna continue to grow, and in the next census, the 20, 30 census, the population in Rio Rico will be greater than the population of the city of Nogales. Right now, it's approximately tied, 25,000 each, but in the 20, 30 census, I'm sure we'll see even more growth in Rio Rico. So the county needs to be forward-looking, and our library board needs to be forward-looking as to services we provide. So that's what I am. I think that, since Poncho's representative from Rio Rico, I'll get together with Poncho. The Rio Rico Library right now has a very capable, what's his correct title? Technician, librarian? What would you call it? What's the best term?
Library assistant.
Library assistant. He a very capable gentleman. I've encountered him the past, last week, a couple, three times. And we can just, if it's all right with Denise, we can sit down and dream, basically. Dream and talk. And right there in the Rio Rico Library, and then, and we get some ideas, we'll, of course, we will share them with everybody here. We'll share them with Denise first and foremost, foremost. And step by step, we'll get the ball rolling.
I had a question when you, after you've dreamed, done your dreaming. Would it be possible, or even maybe before, for the board to, to tour the Rio Rico Library sometime? I haven't been there for a couple of years.
Of course. Of course. Well, I hope all the members of, the current members of the board have seen it, and if you haven't, you need to. And any future more members of the board, you should not only visit Rio Rico, but Tubac and Sonoyta also to get, to look at, to know the entire system.
Okay, good.
I just wanna add that I've been in talks with the county manager, and I will be having access and keys to the kitchen soon, in the next couple of weeks. So when the keys, I have the keys, I will let you know. So we start touring, and I'll invite all the board, and I will also, will concentrate on the Rio Rico board members, which are Christian and Francisco and with you, Brian. So we can move forward with that.
Of course. When you spoke with the county manager a week, two weeks ago, did you bring this subject up?
Yes, it was brought up. And since there is, it's just the library at the moment, because the health department did move, they are willing to share that space, which is a really, a big positive. It's, it's great for us, especially now with the book club starting at the Rio Rico Library. And the little, small area where Alberto eats has become like also a small meeting space that is being used. So the kitchen access is very important for us, too. So staff eats and still has the space for the community, so, yeah.
Okay. Good. Because it's just important to, as you said earlier, get the drums beating, get the word out there, present subtle pressure, subtle pressure, subtle pressure.
And Alberto invited Supervisor Molera to stop by, so Supervisor Molera will be stopping by to visit in the next couple of weeks. I will let you know when that date is.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Any further comments? That concludes this discussion item, and we'll move down to item five, the Sonoyta Library Update. Shelves, table. Assistant Chairperson Havel.
Yes, that's, I've been stopped by the Sonoyta Library to meet the, the new clerk there, who is Camila Molina. And she is, she's commuting from Rio Rico right now. So the shelves and tables are, I understand, on order, and I hope they will be arriving soon. And they will be tables for adults, because we have plenty of tables for children. And of course, we need shelves. And I understand that the key to the storage room where the other books have been stored has been given to the librarian, or to the clerk. Will she have it, or soon?
Soon.
Soon. She will have the keys soon, and we can start, when the shelves arrive, putting the, the books that have been in storage since, well, October of last year, I think, when they started expanding the library. I have heard from several patrons, some, some complaints and some problems that I think we will be attending to soon, that there's no copy machine, as I understand, or fax machine, which was the only fax machine in Sonoyta that was available to the public. So people are obviously very interested in having that reinstated, or a new one. I'm not sure. I think it's on the list. And there was one computer that wasn't functioning, and I believe that also has been communicated to Director Denise. The website, first of all, I'm not sure what the hours are. They seem to be changing. And once we get some stable hours, I think, putting them on the website, because people often check the website to see the hours, they're for the other libraries on the website, but not the Sonoyta library. So that would be good to get that up there. And, yeah, because I'm not sure, can, can you tell me what the schedule is now? And is that a stable schedule?
The schedule currently is Monday, Tuesday to Friday. Tuesday and Thursday is 12 to 4:00, and Wednesday and Friday is 10 to 2:00. It's the stable schedule. It just has to be uploaded on the website, which has not been updated, because we're going through the Polaris training and all, which includes the library website. All that is being worked on, and that go-live date is December. So I know there's a lot of confusion right now, and we do wanna let the public know that there's, if there's any issue, just email me or any of the staff members, and we will, we will work on that.
Okay. And also, information we used to post at the post office with those hours, so Camila could handle that. Okay. All right. Okay, that would be my report on the library update in Sonoyta. You have questions?
I seem like I have some questions. You mentioned before the meeting, maybe people have been interested in knowing that the library and the community room are gonna be used during the election.
Yeah, that's the next, that's item six, the community room usage.
Oh, okay.
If you, we can put those together if you want.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, the, the community room, I believe someone from the county was going to come and speak about that today, but...
I am able to talk on that. We will, also in my talks with the county managers last week, we are gonna be having access and a sign-up sheet. That's gonna be happening in the next week or two. And as soon as we have a sign-up sheet for community members, I will email the board the community sheet, and I will especially communicate with Juanita there. So we're gonna have more access. Once again, we're gonna have keys and more access to the branch libraries. And that way, people are able to come in, sign up, and use that community space, which has been unused for, since March. So that's coming up. So that's a...
Actually, as Brian mentioned, it has been used for training for the election, the primary election. The primary election took place there, and there will be training for the general election, and again, the election in Sonoyta Precinct 15. It will be taking, taking place there. And it worked very well. There is, fortunately, a small kitchen that we have access to as well. And I understand that there will be a key for the clerk to open up, there's a wonderful meeting room, table, and I think there's a screen projector or something there, and that will be opened up. Is that correct, for the public book groups or whatever?
The community space, the large door, that's gonna be the community space. The other small part is still, that's workforce still. So whenever workforce lets me know that they're not using it, then we would move, move on to that. Right now, it's just the space right next to the library, which has the big doors that you open up. That's the community space for now.
And there will be furniture there? Because there's no furniture for anyone to have a meeting there.
I will let the county know that furniture will be needed there.
Okay. All right.
And Denise, when you spoke with the county manager, and you talked about the furniture requests and the shelves, did he mention anything else, like couches? Or I thought there were some couches involved in that furniture.
There's a list that's involved. They're just working out the specifics through the IGA, what is gonna be ordered, what is not, and what is part of my budget, since my budget is the library and not exactly the community space. So they're looking at that and how that's gonna work out. Because I'm able to give them an order, it's just gonna be part of the library. So they just have to work out their part of, okay, you know what, Denise, I hear, order for the community space? And yeah, of course. So those are little details that are being worked out between the county managers and myself.
Okay.
So if that becomes the library's domain, as you said, then it will be dependent upon library hours for any meetings there?
It's not the community, it's not, it's not gonna become my space. I will just have access between, during our hours, during our library hours, to offer that space to the community.
Okay.
So it's still the county's.
That is complicated. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Item six, the Sonoyta Library Community Room Usage. Is there, you've spoke to this already? Is there anything else you wanna add?
No.
All right. Well, it just appears that for you, many of you people haven't seen this, but the community room is right next to the library. It's the same building, has a, has a common door, and I can just see the services getting blended. And furniture and budgets getting blended. And there's gonna be a need in the community, in the Sonoyta community, to have a scheduler or to some, to schedule the community room. And that may fall on the library employee, because it's the only individual who's there consistently until the, the... consistently until the, the community of Sonoyta organizes themselves and establishes, has a volunteer or an employee of some sort, of some designation, who will do managerial, administrative work for them. So the library is going to be involved with the community room, the community room is going to be involved in the library, until there's more of a separation of responsibilities. All right. Anything else on item six? Anybody? Item seven, Library Board Bylaws. We have a copy. Doniza, do you want to explain why we receive this?
I, it was, this copy has the date, this one with the signatures I have in my office. The only thing that's missing here was that footnote that the city attorney said was out, which had to do with absences. That is the only thing that's missing. So everything else was voted on, well, it was already voted on, it was just that clarification, whether it needed to be in there, and it didn't need to be in there. So you have the actual bylaws with the date. If you want the signed copy, it's in my office. It's just, it had a bunch of writing on it, side notes, so I didn't add it, that's...
All right. For the members of the Board that weren't here, or Board members back in the month of March, when we approved this, and that's how long it's been, because the, we discussed it, we took, over a period of time, meeting after meeting, we took over different segment, sections, statements of this, and we, we came to a conclusion, and then we sent it to the city attorney for its revision and approval. And since there's not really a city attorney, but it's a contract with a legal firm outside the city, it's taken six months, maybe seven, to get it back, but I guess we've got it back. So you should all read it, and if you are in agreement with it, go over to your office to sign it, is that what is...
It's already signed, so you, you already approved it. It was, it was just that footnote, which really didn't make a difference. So we're good. If you do, if the Board decides that they do want to sign it, we can bring it back to the November meeting, and everyone here could sign it. It's up to you.
All right. Well, what is the consensus of the Board members? We have several new Board members. Were you, Santos, were you a Board member when we did this in March? You don't? Okay. And Pancho, of course, wasn't. And we may have new members. Do you want to add another signature page with the, the current, and change the date? What's, what's the feeling of the Board?
Then they would have to read it and vote on it, if they're going to sign it.
We'd have to...
Yeah. It is, it was approved in March by the members of the Board at that time, and they're the ones who have signed it. So we can go forward.
Ed, you're the longest serving member of this Board, what's your opinion?
I would suggest that we save it for our next meeting, our November meeting.
A vote to approve the bylaws and re-sign the document?
Okay.
Re-sign the document, yeah.
All right. Then we'll have new signatures on, okay.
Okay, thank you. Item eight, Library Department Budget, which we all have a copy of, and I glanced at it before the meeting. I hope you've had a chance. If anybody have any questions, comments, or observations about the budget. Juanita, are you at the end of the row? You want to start? Do you have anything you want to say? Or anybody? I mean, we don't need to specifically go down the line, you just... You can see that the, the budget has increased substantially from fiscal year '22, when it was $583,000, to the proposed budget of fiscal year '25, $875,000. That's almost a $300,000 increase, and, which is over 50% in, in three or four fiscal years. That's an impressive increase. I have a question on the last category, 91, capital expenses, which says books, tapes, and videos, and it was at $26,822, and now is it zero?
A line item has to be taken out. It was changed, because it was under, it's our books and materials, which should not have been under capital expenses, so it's been changed out to 7020. So that's a change that, that's why it looks like that, but it's not...
So that's general materials?
It's, it went to general materials, it was just, it just remained there, that line item.
Okay. That was a question also, what was general materials? The, I remember last month or the month before, you mentioned that there was a new circulation system, and you were, everybody was training for it. Where is that in this budget?
That was actually in, already in the Millennium, our Millennium, transferred, is transferring to Polaris. We did not have to ask for a capital expense, because that, the money that was paid for Millennium transferred over to Polaris. So it's $40,000, it's in $6580, I think, in one of the line items. And we're actually doing the training right now, every other week, and next week, it's going to start. Three staff members, two staff members and myself are actually doing that training right now, before staff does, and before we go with the live date of December 12th. So you are not seeing it right there, because it's not capital, it's part of, we were able to get just move Millennium, the Millennium money to the Polaris. Was, what was approved for capital were the security cameras, which have been ordered, the flooring, which has been completed, and we are working on shelves for Tubaq, Rio Rico, and as you know, the furniture for Sonoyta. And other little tidbits here and there with the maintenance of the cap, of the main library.
The physical jury is from this January 1st to December 31st? The physical jury is, is from January to December?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other observations, comments by the Board? All right, well, it's very informative, I'm really glad to see it, and thank you very much for bringing it, Doniza. All right, moving on to number, item number nine, the Friends Update, Mr. Ed Delsi.
Okay, what I can report on is that we had a very successful three-day event at the County Fair, distributing books, and thanks to our treasurer, Marva Weiss, we were able to get the women's, the Nogales Women's Club to contribute books and volunteers to help out at the booths that we had at the County Fair. Everything went very well, and we were able to get, I believe, my count was either six or seven new cards that were distributed to families that had come by for the very first time to the County Fair. And we were able to encourage them to get the cards and sign everything up. We've also maintained, we will be having our meeting after this meeting, at 11:15, at the Nogales Library Board Meeting Room. Plus, we've continued to distribute library books in neighborhood-level library kits that we've had, that are highlighted in the newspaper here, in this particular article. And Marva and I are handling the ones in Nogales, at the Safeway Store, the Ho-Ho-Cum Rec Center, and Meteocoli Preschool on, was it on Morley? Morley and Frederick, I think, Frederick Street. And she and I are taking turns, and we've had other new members come in onto the Board, which are representing Rio Rico and Tubaq, and that's worked out real well. And they are also taking charge in the little libraries in their respective areas to replenish the books, so we continue to do that, and so far, so, so I can't complain on the work that we're doing with Friends, and just building it up from there, yeah. It's, it's kind of a new concept throughout the, the community base, to be able to get other volunteers to come in. But we're continuing to work on that, and we meet monthly after the Board meeting at the library.
Thank you, Ed. Yes, questions?
Yes, we have grants, we have a couple of grants that, that we are using to promote literacy with the Book Saves Lives. And there's, I believe, is that scheduled for tomorrow at the Nogales Library?
Yeah.
Do you know?
Yes, and that, that's, yeah, that's the date we have for tomorrow.
Do we know if that's going to happen yet or not? We'll discuss that at the Friends meeting. Yeah, we were going to start, Anna Dawn, who is no longer on the Board and has left the area still, is the one who wrote the grants, and she's helping to coordinate the training sessions, which will be led to invite parents and children, preschool children, to come and learn about books and reading. And there will be books distributed free to the people who attend, and other ways to get the books out into the community. So this, this will impact all of our branch libraries and the patrons and children at...
Yeah, Anna Dawn has been a very resourceful member, and she's currently encountering serious health problems, and we're trying to work with her in every aspect to be able to maintain the training schedule that she had established, and then just working with that, so they should continue to do so, yeah.
So we'll have more details at the next meeting.
Ed, a quick question. How many of those libraries, the little libraries, are around the county?
If I go with the list...
It's 23, I think. Not all of them by the Friends, but if we take...
I think it was 28, mainly from the Safeway Store all the way to Loquio.
Okay.
In China, so, I mean, and it's in every community, every community is really taking in. And she came up with this list that gave us 23, and then at the meeting, we discussed a total of 28 options that we were working with to be able to work that in. And she's worked from that schedule on it, yeah.
And the books come from donations?
They all come from donations, yes. Marva had a very good working relationship with the Pima County Friends. And at their last event that they had, the leftover books, children's books in particular, that were left from that particular event, were donated to us at Friends, yeah. So it's a good working relationship that we've been able to establish, yeah.
Any further comments on the discussion from the Friends of the Library Update? Thank you. Moving on to item 10, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Minutes of August 14, 2024. This is a discussion and an action item. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of 8:14:24? Thank you, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Any discussion, any comments, corrections, observations of the minutes? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor approving the minutes of 8:14:24, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item five, under our agenda, Library Director's Report, point number one, events, programs, Nogales, Rio Rico, Tubaq, and Sonoyta.
I want to let the Library Board know that we, in October, we have different events coming up in Nogales. We have a Halloween costume contest, we have the first House of Terror from the teens that they're going to be doing on October 31st. Rio Rico is doing their own Halloween activities, Tubaq as well, and I know Sonoyta is too. We've had events in September. Santos, thank you for the Fiesta Patrias with our little puppies. And we've had different events in Rio Rico. Now we have a vinyl collection, so I invite the public, if they have really good vinyl records that they want to share with us, please bring them by, they're going to be, once Polaris starts, those are going to be integrated into the system, and the public and the community in Rio Rico will be able to trade some vinyl, I mean, something different. And we're looking forward to that. It's just different events at the different libraries to, to represent the different community members that we have, the patrons, and we are always open to new ideas. Just this past Friday, we had our border fashion show at the library. No, we weren't the models, we wish we were the models, I would have fallen. We had a great, Domingo Toledo came by from New York, he's a local, he grew up in Nogales, he's now a fashion designer, creative director in New York, he was here. Maritza Liningueira, our local author and local, our local celebrity, too, she was here. And it was great seeing teens become models, walk the runway, through the bookshelves, and you, teens and, just teens in generals being in the libraries is just so, it motivates me. So that was something different. We had the unveiling last week as well, so many different events. And just so the public knows that the library is their space, and it's a community space all around. And it's no more, shh, you can't talk in the libraries, it's yours, so. And I know, I'm going to mention this now, in January, we will have the unveiling of the new library card designs, which, when you enter the main library, as you know, the summer camp from Alfredo's office, they were there, they did that beautiful mural, that is going to be the library design. And it, for the adults and for childrens, we have a local artist who used to work at the library, Esteban Michel, he created the galaxy that is in the children's area. I encourage all of you to come visit and see those two murals, they will be the designs. And the unveiling for those are January, and we're going to do celebrations in Nogales and Sonoyta. And then in February, we are going to do a little 80s-themed party for, for the same unveiling of the library cards in Tubaq and in Rio Rico. So many, many fun things coming up. And I'm just going to keep moving, if that's okay with you, Brian, to the next item.
Yes, please.
We have, Juanita mentioned our new hire, our new Sonoyta Library Clerk, Camila Molina, she's been an asset, she's, she's right on board with the team, and she's our youngest, she's 19, she turned 19 or 20? She just turned 19 a few weeks ago. So we have a great age range at the library, we have 19 to 80, so it's a little bit of everything for everyone. And I'm just going to move on with our homework tutors. We have Arturo Romo here at Nogales, he's our tutor. Hector Eredia at the Rio Rico Library, and we are working to begin doing outreach again in Sonoyta and Elgin, so we get a homework tutor in Sonoyta. And I think, am I missing anything? Oh, and I will not be here October 21st through the 28th. If you need anything, please reach out to any of the staff members at the libraries, they're more than willing to help you. Karina, of course, our supervisor. That's, that's it.
A quick question. Do you get a lot of kids that come in for homework tutoring?
Yeah, we are, we are in Nogales, it varies, it depends on the date and the week and everything, but yeah, we are, we're getting people back in Nogales, and we are starting to get, you know, kids trickling in over at Rio Rico, which is great.
Wonderful.
Okay, any further questions of the librarian for our report?
And I had noticed that many of the computers that you had in the large room were removed, are those being replaced in the homework that students are coming up with?
Yeah, the computers were taken off during the process that we, the flooring was being done, and now the computers are coming back slowly but surely. We do have laptops, so right now, at the moment, we have 10. And as more things come in, we're ordering shelves also for the main library, you will see the library in a different way, and yes, we're, we're getting those computers back. So just finishing, like, there are little renovations inside, so we can bring the library from 1924 to 2024. It's, it's coming along, she's getting her facelift, she's looking good.
Thank you. An item that's not on this printed agenda, but I was asked to add, is the Board Member Report. Are the, the Board, do any of the members of the Board have anything, comments they want to make, any activities they've participated in, observed in the libraries?
I guess, I'll just say, a couple of weeks back, I, I took my three boys to the Rio Rico Library. We hadn't been there in probably a couple of years, but they were very excited, they found books right away that they wanted to check out, so they checked out some books, read them in about three days, and turned them right back in, so they were excited to go in there. And I also attended the Santa Cruzer Event, which was wonderful, I loved seeing the kids that they had there, the kids were very excited, it might have been the Happy Meals and cupcakes, I'm not sure. But it was really exciting to, to see, and it's, it's wonderful to have a community partner to, to support that, so.
Thank you. Any other Board member?
Yeah, one other thing. After our County Fair, and I returned... After our county fair and I returned some of the items to the main library, the staff asked me to keep the banner for Friends. Friends have always been stored at the library and they've asked me to hold on to it for Friends, to be able to continue using that banner that we've always had for our functions. So I just wanted to let the board know that we are in possession of, I am in possession of the banner, the Friends banner that we use for all of our exhibits, yeah.
I just want to make a comment too. Lately, I've been hosting a program with Bilob Nogales and staff members from the library, public library has been attending and the information and all the, what the magic of the library has has been exposed and I think it's a great opportunity to, for the community to know what else, because we can see different things. We can see history, murals, we can see events, kids, youth, and, and for everyone. So it's a great opportunity and I think that it goes in a, in a very good way and taking, and adopting and accepting more community events and it is, it's definitely been a great, great encouragement for the, for the staff and, and that you guys work right there. And seeing that there is more to come and probably, we, we will try to see we can involve the Vida, uh, on to income tax assistance, doing it right there. And I don't know, maybe, maybe an oven to do pan de mujer or pan de empanadas right there, okay? We never know. Thank you.
Alright, and I will, I guess I will conclude that, I guess it was last week with Danita, we got involved with the county to come over to the Rio Rico Library and do some basic maintenance, which had been, had not been taken care of for apparently months. The large overhang over the sidewalks were, well, there were barn swallow nests for one thing. There was a lot of evidence of bats, which are common here in the summer season, the rain, in the monsoon season. And overall, the, we encouraged, they finally brought in a high-pressure washer and washed the overhang and took care of everything. The bats returned and as they will, but they'll probably be leaving the area soon. I know they will. So got involved with the two supervisors that represent Rio Rico and, and the librarian and got that taken care of. So I was at that library a couple of times last week, looking at the progress. And then I also mentioned earlier, I was at the, the mobile library event briefly, got to meet and greet with people there. Alright, item six on, or six on the last item is communications. There's no designated individual. Is there, is there any particular communication we need to discuss?
Future agenda.
Oh, we changed communications to future agenda items? Okay. Then we will do that, future agenda items. Is there anything? Yes, go ahead.
Miguel Melendez, ooh, from IT, will be giving a presentation on Polaris and our new circulation system. Miguel, Karina, and Juan Pablo will be giving that presentation to the board.
At, at the next meeting?
At the next meeting on November 13th.
Okay.
And I will also have our current interim fire chief, Fernando Urias, giving a presentation, well, talking about fire safety, fire literacy. He will be going to read to the kids at all four libraries in November, so. I'm working on that, so he's going to come and talk to you guys about that.
Okay.
And I hope we have an update on the community room at the Sonoyta Library, some more details to clarify its usage.
And then to the point of new board members, we, we are currently a board of seven and the bylaws, if you read them, says that, and I can read it, but it said, I believe it says eight or more, something to that. Is it nine?
Nine.
Okay, so we have room for two new board members and we, it appears we have two candidates, which I'm very grateful for from the city of Nogales. So how will we, do we want to put that on the agenda for their approval before they go to the city council or? We don't really have a procedure for that, so. So you want to put it on the November meeting?
In the, in the new bylaws, we don't nominate anymore. We can make suggestions.
Recommendations?
Recommendations, yeah. For a member.
Alright, well, that would be the agenda item, not a nomination, but a recommendation to the city council.
That's right, yeah. Yes, if, if the candidates are agreeable.
Okay. Alright, we'll do it that way then. And let's see, we're going to... Superintendent Velazquez is going to come in November to speak about the mobile library Do you want to ask the librarian from Sonoyta to come to the meeting, Danita, to, to get to meet her?
No, on Wednesday, or when November 4th?
This is Sonoyta. So I don't know what time is the, it's because I was...
November 6th.
Oh, no, yeah, our November meeting, the second Wednesday, would be November 13th, right?
Right, it's Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you want to put that on? Alright, so that's a start. As always, if you, anything else comes to mind in the next, of course, the next three weeks, forward them on to Ms. Lopez for, to important inclusion into the November 13th agenda. Alright, any further items? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 11 o'clock.
Great, second?
Is there a motion to adjourn? Do I hear one?
Yes, I'm a.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?